Thanks for being here this evening. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And as we do, if I can have a member certify closed session for us.
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session, closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. And Ms. Soller, if you don't mind.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. Is there a motion on item 33 for our agenda to amend the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would like to amend tonight's agenda to include two items, 8.05, approval of findings regarding student appeal report number 2223-A14, and action item number 8.06, approval of decision regarding student appeal report number 2223-A17.
Thank you. And just for clarity and understanding, these are not on our agenda because these are matters that we just took up in our closed session. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And Ms. Soller.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. It's my pleasure to ask Reed and Lee, who are Scouts of America, joining us this evening, to come up forward, and they have agreed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please stand. Just come right up to the center. Microphone there. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reed and Lee, and really glad that you can be with us this evening. Appreciate your service. Okay. We'll move on to our announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the past several weeks, literally dozens of new instructional staff members have participated in launch our new educator onboarding program designed by teachers for teachers. The program aims to connect new educators to our WJCC learning community, support them through personalized mentoring and professional learning, and inspire them to launch a strengths-based career with WJCC schools. The preboarding experience held over the last few weeks culminates this week in a two-day launch on Wednesday and Thursday. We are really excited to have all of these new colleagues onboard. To celebrate our new additions, we invite you along to follow along on social media as we spotlight some of our new crew. Families are invited to visit their schools at open houses next week. High schools host open house on Tuesday, August 22nd, middle schools on Wednesday, August 23rd, and elementary schools on Thursday, August 24th. And finally, as staff members return next week and students return the following week, I want to wish everyone a wonderful 2023-24 school year. I'm excited for the learning and fun this year has in store, and I know we're going to have a great year. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Are there any reports from board members this evening? Seeing none, I just want to echo Dr. Herron, our superintendent's enthusiasm, excitement for the return to school. And I'm sure there are a lot of parents that would agree, it's time to get back to school. So let the learning begin. Really happy that it's already underway. We'll move on to our announcements, excuse me, our students and staff recognition. We do have one this evening. Turn it over to Ms. Ordigo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate one of our building administrators. The Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals saw in him what we have known for many years, a dedicated, high-quality, student-centered leader. Would Mr. Howard Townsend, 2023 Outstanding High School Principal of Virginia, please come forward? Mr. Townsend has been principal at Jamestown High School since 2018 after serving six years as an assistant principal in WJCC schools. Among staff, Mr. Townsend has created a strong collaborative culture that is focused on student achievement and success. He has established a family-oriented school climate and positive culture in which every student, staff member, and family member takes great pride. Mr. Townsend's leadership extends beyond Jamestown as the current chair of Class Four of the Virginia High School League, member of the VHSL Executive Board, and executive committee member of the School University Research Network Principals Academy Board. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Townsend. I believe that is all for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, and congratulations again, and thank you for your service, Dr. Townsend, soon to be Dr. Townsend. No pressure. All right, we're going to move on to item six, our public comment for the evening. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Ordigo.
Thank you. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Who we have?
Speaker number one is Michael Hoseng.
Good evening. Virginia Law, Section 1-240.1 states that a parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. Sadly, five of you violated this law during your last meeting when you stripped the rights of parents to object to books in our school libraries. I know you played word games and used semantics to say that library books are educational materials and not instructional, and that parents only have a right to object to instructional materials. But you're not fooling anyone with your games of blocking parental rights and violation of Virginia law. And it's a shame that you consider solar panels a much more important issue, that you put approval of them on hold in order to get more information, but when Ms. Ordigo asked to do the same for the provision that you were talking about last board meeting, five of you decided that that wasn't important. And I'm sorry, Mr. Beers, but yes, there is a vocal group of parents that want to protect our children from pornographic materials. It's a shame that five-
Mr. Hoseng, I do want to ask that you just direct your comments to the chair. We won't deduct any time for that interruption, but please do-
I understand, sir. I still have a First Amendment right. You are public officials. You are in the performance of your duties.
You can start his time, Ms. Soller.
And how is it that you're arguing that one parent gets to make a decision for 11,000 students? I can't go into a library and remove a book. I have to go through a process. It is the process that ends with this school board that can remove a book, not any one parent. So please stop that baseless argument. You are taking parents out of the process against Virginia law. As Ms. Ordigo asked last meeting, why are you so afraid of this process? Why are you so afraid to have parents object to a book and have that book go through a review process if it weren't for an agenda? And based on your new policy, are you going to put back into the school libraries the comic book that talked about killing a teacher that the school system unilaterally removed earlier this year? Why are you, the administration and teachers, only upset about pornographic books being removed from the school libraries and not talking about the book that talks about killing a teacher? It sure seems like there is an agenda that this school board, administration, and certain teachers are pushing, but I can tell you, it's not what the majority of parents or voters want. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Susan Hildum.
Hello. Dr. Herron, members of the school board, I'm Susan Hildum, representing the York, James City, Williamsburg, NAACP-
Ms. Hildum, can you bring the mic closer to you, please?
Representing the York, James City, Williamsburg, NAACP Education Committee. And I just had a few things to mention. First, I want to thank you for the addition of the education class at Lafayette High School, since we'd spoken about that before. And I want to thank you for protecting the school library books. I feel that parents definitely should have a say in their children's education, but that doesn't mean they have the right to restrict the education of other people's children. We also support this school district, and we sincerely hope that it will stay together. We will do what we can to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildum.
Next, Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. My name is Marco Sardi, and I am the president of WJCEA. I'm excited to be starting this new school year, both for the opportunity to get back in the classroom and for my new role as president of the union. Tonight, I would like to share with the board our vision for collective bargaining for staff. We've enjoyed a very positive relationship as staff between Dr. Herron and the board when it comes to your willingness to hear our concerns. I would unfortunately be remiss if I did not also encourage my membership to plan for when things are not always so positive. If we only planned for the times when things went well, we would be sorely unprepared for when they don't. There are a lot of things changing between the upcoming election and the contract between the county and the city. And as your employees, we are seeking the right to have a seat at the table for our contract and to set into writing how we can be heard officially. Over the next few weeks, we will have a majority of staff receiving authorization cards. Once we reach a majority of signatures, we will need to have a resolution drafted jointly by this body and WJCEA so we can outline how we can make this process work for WJCC. Our system will not need the same things as has been done in Richmond or Montgomery or Falls Church. This should be a community effort with parent feedback and feedback from students and yourselves to make sure that we can craft the best possible vision for WJCC. I welcome the opportunity to have a joint meeting between WJCEA and this board so we can draft such a resolution, and I am eager to communicate any questions that you may have about this process and with Dr. Herron. I would be remiss if I did not advocate for each member of this board to reach out also to your constituents on the city council and board supervisors so that overtalks of the division split continue. WJCEA conducted our own survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sardi. If you have notes that you'd like the board to receive, you can give them to the clerk. Thank you, Ms. Sardi.
Next is Jessica Anderson.
Hello, I'm Jessica Anderson, both a parent and employee of WJCC. I want to start by saying thank you for your decision on the book and how they're going to be handled moving forward. I think you're empowering parents-to-parent versus empowering a single parent to basically set a tone for the rest of us and 11,000 families. With that being said, I wanted to address the concerns around the impending separation of the WJCC school division. I know there's a lot of concern in the community about this decision, and you are a part of it, even though I know you do not have the final say. I realize we are still waiting the feasibility study from the city, but I want to voice some valid concerns that are both on the record and discussed between the three local entities. First off, there is no conversation on a feasibility study for the county, so I don't really know either city or county are offering any kind of positives moving forward for families, staff, students, et cetera. So I'd really like to find a conversation around that. My next concern, I think, is as a taxpayer, as someone who lives in the county, tax revenue that's going to be needed, we obviously are going to need a middle school immediately, and I mean, I know all of us are talking about that. And also, the three-year timeline is a little scary because we don't have land, we don't have anything in place. So that's a question there, as well as what the school budget would look like with the state. In addition to that, I'm very concerned about the quality and quantity of curriculums that's going to be offered in the city for particularly middle and high school students. We have a robust curriculum right now because we are a shared unit, and I'm very fearful that the city is going to get short-changed in the separation. And then finally, I just really hope, and I think other people have, you know, said this as well, that yourselves or supervisors, the city council, really give us a transparent dialogue to really see what's going on and possibly maybe a town hall of some sort so that we can have some community involvement and conversations around everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Allyn Parm.
Good evening, Chairman Dow, members of the board, and Dr. Herron. My name is Allyn Parm, a WJCA member and employee of the school division. Every student deserves a high-quality education in a safe and healthy school environment that supports all aspects of learning. Teachers and ESPs have a great impact on student outcomes and improving conditions for teachers, improving conditions for students. Yet factors such as low pay, challenging work conditions, and inadequate support are driving teachers and staff turnover while harming Virginia students. A key component to achieve a safe, healthy, supportive environment for staff and students is allowing teachers and staff to collectively bargain. Following the 2020 reversal of the state's decades-long ban on local-level collective bargaining, we are able to be having an opportunity where all factors can join together. Because having teachers and school staff have a voice on the job, the overall impact is good for workers, students, and the community. WJCA will make informed information provided to you to keep our local leaders informed, and we thank you for your leadership and continuous advocacy with WJCEA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parm. And thank you to our speakers who came out this evening to lend your perspective on these issues. We'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, which includes item 7-1, approval of the financial report and monthly bills for July of 2023, 7-2, approval of the minutes from the August 1st meeting, item 7-3, approval of revisions to JHCD administering medication to students, 7-4, approval of revisions to JJAC, student-athlete concussions during extracurricular activities, 7-5, approval of creation of policy JJAF, student-athlete sudden cardiac arrest, 7-6, approval of creation of policy JJAH, student-athlete sudden heat illness prevention, 7-7, approval of revisions to policy GBI, staff gifts and solicitations, 7-8, approval of revisions to policy GCBCA, employee assistance program, and then 7-9, approval of a release from compulsory attendance case number R2324-01, 7-10, approval of a release from compulsory attendance case number R2324-02, 7-11, approval of a lease from compulsory attendance case number R2324-03, and finally, 7 dot 12, approval of revision from compulsory attendance case number R2324-04. Is there a motion as read?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Soller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right, if I could have a motion to approve the personnel actions this evening, item 8-1.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and thank you, Dr. Beers, for the second. Ms. Soller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Item 8-2, approval of the fiscal year 2025 budget calendar. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the budget calendar for fiscal year '25 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion on what we've received, recommendation on the 2025 budget calendar? Okay. Ms. Soller?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right. Item 8-3, approval of authorization to permit the city or county use of school buses. Is there a motion for this agenda item?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the authorization to permit city-county use of school buses.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
She beat you to it. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Again, I just want to offer any last-minute questions or thoughts of concern, something that we have done each year, and we don't get too many requests from the city or county, but obliged to lend our support when they need it, if they need it. One, there's been one request. Soller?
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. And now you've got me curious what that one request is, but we won't call you up. You're good. Don't move. Item 8-4, reminding myself that we have three more, two more, two more. 8-4, approval of the 2324 CNS food and consumables purchase. Is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2023-2024 CNS food and consumables purchase as presented.
And should we identify what those purchases are, the dollar amounts?
It isn't in the recommended action, but I can. I mean, okay, I'll go ahead. Hershey frozen treats, the PO amount is $50,948.86. Pet for milk and dairy at $308,186.79. And Trident beverage for frozen juice products at $27,298.9.
Thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
I was looking at Ms. Young, and I think I saw her lips moving. Ms. Young, thank you for the second.
I had a deeper voice, though.
Okay. And any, again, clarifying questions that we need answered? Ms. Soller?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Now, on to item 8-5, approval of decision regarding student appeal report number 2223-A14. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to uphold the superintendent's finding in case number 2223-A14 that there was no violation of policy JB and to authorize the chair to issue a letter outlining the decision of the board within 30 days.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
I'm sorry, I read that wrong. I said that there was no violation, and it says that there was a violation. Can I read it again?
Please, thank you.
Motion to uphold the superintendent's finding in case number 2223-A14 that there was a violation of policy JB and to authorize the chair to issue a letter outlining the decision of the board within 30 days.
I appreciate that you caught that.
Sorry.
Because that is important. All right. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And Ms. Soller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. And finally, item 8-6, approval of decision regarding student appeal report number 2223-A17. Is there a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I move to uphold the superintendent's finding in case number 2223-A17 that the conduct did not constitute harassment.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Soller?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right, that brings us to Gen. Item 9, our board member comments. I'd like to start with you, Dr. Beers, if you're prepared. Ready?
Yeah, I really, all I would like to say is, I look forward to the opening of our schools and our kids returning, and I know everybody's really excited, and I hope that continues on through the year as well. That's all.
Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Yes. I'm excited for the opening of school. I think we've got parents that are going to be very happy that day, and I know as a teacher, a former teacher, that it's always an exciting day. I also wanted to congratulate Mr. Town, Mr. slash Dr. Townsend, I don't know where it's going to cross over in there, but thank you very much, and congratulations on your excellent work and the recognition that you're receiving. I think it's well-deserved. Thank you very much, Mr. Townsend.
Ms. Hummel?
Sure, I'm just going to echo my fellow school board members. I'm excited for the start of school. I'm excited that we are, what is the percentage, Dr. Herron, of 90? What, how much?
We're over 99% staffed.
Isn't that wonderful? I want to just take a moment to let that sink in. In a very challenging year, we are 99% fully staffed, and we still have a couple more days to move that needle even up to 100%. But it was a huge undertaking for our HR department, so I just wanted to thank them for all of their efforts this summer. And also, it's a testament that WJCC is a great place to work. So excited for that. Congratulations, Mr. slash Dr. Townsend. You were some of my kids' coaches, teachers at Jamestown ages ago. You were some of my kids' coach, teachers at Jamestown ages ago, and they knew way back then all the glory in store for you. So congratulations. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Donner?
I also echo what my colleagues have said. I am one of those parents who's very excited for my child to go back to school, and I'm also excited as a board member to be able to get back in the schools and starting some of our visits again. I think that is part of, one of my highlights, and it always reminds me, as much as there can be turmoil in the world and different things that happen in schools, when you get in the buildings, you really get to see, like, things are not perfect, but they're going well, and our students are loved and well-cared-for, and, you know, Mr. Townsend is one of those people that leads that. So congratulations to you, and I'm looking forward to convocation next Friday.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Hundley?
Yes, if any parents have not did their school shopping, this Saturday, Real People Educating Others from 10:00 to 1:00 will be at Lafayette High School giving away free backpacks and supplies to children. I believe there are haircuts involved, nail painting, gaming truck, so please come out and support that. Also, also super excited about convocation and teachers. I know they've already been back in the building, so getting ready for our students. And congratulations to Mr. Townsend. I know your motto is clap clap, let's go to work, so I'm sure you've already started that. And I do want to say happy birthday to Dr., to Mr. Dow, because I know what it's like to have a birthday and be in a meeting on your birthday, and birthdays are important. Life is just, we shouldn't take it for granted, so I hope you'll be able to celebrate tonight. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. Ms. Ordigo?
I think most of it's been said. Of course, echo my colleagues, congratulations to Mr. Townsend. It's not just a recognition in our school division, but in the entire state, which is huge. It doesn't just reflect on you and your school, but on our whole division, which only serves all of us, so thank you for that. And yeah, it's, I'm also a parent, and it is time. There have been way too many hours on screens and trying to combat that, so I'm sure all the parents can relate that it is time, and I'm very excited for convocation. I really enjoyed that last year, and I'm very excited to see how we kick off this next school year and what theme awaits us. Was also going to wish Mr. Dow a very happy birthday, and apologize to all of you that this meeting was so short. I'm sure you want me to continue talking because it's only seven. In any case, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. I appreciate hearing from our speakers this evening, in particular to the comments from our members of the WJCEA, the Educators Association. I appreciate you being here and sharing your perspective on collective bargaining. It is something that the board is aware is a desire of certain members of the association, and so it's something that this board will be discussing in the weeks or moments to come, and look forward to really communicating with you and dialoguing with the Educators Association on what's good for the community. Okay, so thank you for being here and for sharing your perspective. Congratulations again, sir. Really no surprise seeing you at work. Why did it take so long to be recognized at this level? But well deserved, and so just really thankful for your service, and thankful for the service of all of our principals, our assistant principals, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers, and it is heartening to have an opportunity to be out in the community, the grocery store, the gas pump, and be approached by a teacher or a staff member, and they're excited that the door's going to be open again. That's happened on more than one occasion in the last few weeks, and so it is infectious, and I think it's the mark of a fantastic school division. And it does need to be said again, we are Williamsburg-Jame City County, and we will remain that for as long as we're allowed to be. And so as we do, we're going to continue the high level of excellence that this division has provided to this community. Move on to Item 10, our meeting schedule, 10-1. As you've heard, the Williamsburg-Jame City County Schools' convocation set for the 25th of August, 9:00 a.m. The school board, Dr. Heron, will be here at James Clear Middle School Library, here at Long Hill Road, 101 Long Hill Road, or over there, excuse me, there. I'm all backwards right now. Turned around. Policy Committee, I'm moving on. Policy Committee, September 15th, 8:30 a.m., Room 108 in the school board and central office, and then school board candidate briefing on September 15th, 8:15 a.m., Room 300, Room 300 at the annex. Upcoming meetings, we have closed session followed by work session, action items on September 5th, 3:15 and 4:30 respectively, Room 300, and then on the 19th of September, closed session, a regular meeting, Room 300, and back here for our regular meeting in the gym. I mean, yes, this is where we are, upstairs. I'm sorry. I got all turned around.